4170 Eglin Town Square, 1431 1437 Victoria Park Avenue. I believe staff will be deferring this till the next council meeting, hopefully for the last time.
Okay, so Counsel Crawford is moving to defer all of SC 12.4. On favor. It's on the screen. On favor, show of hands. Thank you. Carried. Counsel, Deputy Mayor Minewong.
Yes, just confirming, IE 1511 was held by Counsel Holliday?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have any holds on executive committee? Because we're going through executive. No? Okay. Board of Health, Counsel Cressy has held the item down. Economic and Community Development. Any holds?
Speaker. Speaker.
Yes.
EC 16.1, Counsel Thompson. It's the Interim Shelter Recovery and Infrastructure Implementation Plan.
Okay.
I'd like to hold that, please.
Madam Speaker, can I just point of order or clarification?
Okay, just one sec. Just one sec, please. So Counsel Thompson, you're holding EC 16.1. So you would hold GL 16.6? Yeah. Because we're considering it together?
That's right.
Correct? Okay.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So if you have any hold, if you can put your name up, request. Counsel Grimes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Counsel Thompson just held the items I was going to hold down, so I have an interest in that. Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Cressy.
Speaker, I'm currently holding two items here. EC 16.6, Support for Artists and Musicians, and EC 16.7, Current Impact of the COVID Pandemic on Venues. I can release both of those if it's the will of counsel.
I have a question on the second item, Madam Speaker.
So I can release the first and I'll continue to hold the second, if that's all right, Speaker.
Okay, thank you. So Counsel Cressy is releasing EC 16.6. On favor, show of hands. Carried. Okay, Counsel Cole, Economic Development.
Wanted to hold the music item that Counsel Cressy was holding.
Well, we just--
Support EC 16.6.
Okay, but we just released it and voted on it. You want--
Well, I had my name on--
Okay.
I'll move to reopen.
Okay, to move to reopen. On favor, carried.
I'll continue to hold them both then, Speaker. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, General Government. We're going to General Government now. Deputy Mayor Minewong.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll hold GL 16.5, Renewal of Proprietary Technology Maintenance Contracts Supporting the City Services from 2021 to 2025.
Counsel Perutsa.
I was going to hold the same item, Madam Speaker. GL 16.5.
Okay, it's being held. Thank you. Infrastructure and Environment Committee.
Speaker, I don't have a hold. It's Counsel Perks.
Yes.
But I do have-- I would like to advise that on the-- I'm sorry. The parking pad item, I will need to go in camera and get legal advice.
Okay, which is IE 16.2. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Bradford on Infrastructure and Environment.
Yeah, I'm going to be holding item 16.2.
Yes, you've already held it. It's on the list. Thank you.
And then question-- point of clarification, Madam Speaker.
Yes.
Is it better to just come off mute and show what we want to hold? Or is it better to use the actual process online here and put the name on the list? Like, how do we want to do that? Do we all want to use the system? Or is it either or?
Yeah, you have to put your name on the list.
I know. I understand, and I'm doing that. I just also see that, you know, you could also just come off mute and show hold as we do in the chamber.
No. Oh.
I would just like it to be one--
We have a list in the chambers.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
It's going to be every way.
Counsel Carroll.
Thanks, Madam Speaker. Infrastructure and Environment, 16.3, Non-Competitive Contract for a New Way Scale Solution. I'd like to hold that. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning and Housing. Counsel Byla.
Madam Speaker, I would be able to release 17.1 and 17.2.
Okay, do you want to mention the item?
17.1 is the Implementation of the Community Housing Partnership Renewal Program.
Okay, so you'd like to release? Okay. On PH 17.1, on favor, show of hands. Carried. Okay, Counsel Byla.
17.2, Authorizing a Termination and Discharge of Social Housing Agreement at 223 Ozler Street.
Okay. On favor, show of hands. Carried. Thank you. Counsel Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to hold PH 17.9, Development Pipeline 2020.
Thank you. Counsel Fletcher.
Thank you, Speaker, and good morning, everyone. The PH 17.14 was sent without recommendations, and the supplemental report was sent. So I'd like to move that, if that's okay now.
Okay.
Was asked for at committee, and now it's here.
Yes, we'll put it on the screen.
Thank you.
Okay, it's on the screen. This is PH 17.14, 1117 and 1119 Gerard Street East. Okay. On favor. Show of hands. Carried. Thank you. Counsel Carroll.
Thanks, Madam Speaker. Counsel Holliday's got me covered.
Okay, thank you. At Tobago York Community Council. Deputy Mayor Minewong, would you like to hold NY 18.23, Don Mills Center, Extension of Section 37 Terms?
Sure. Yes, I'll hold that.
Because it's here without a recommendation.
Thank you.
Thanks. Scarborough Community Council.
Speaker, Counsel Thompson.
Counsel Thompson.
And I'm obviously reaching out to you because I am not on the new system because of the training that happened yesterday wasn't fulsome. I'd like to hold SC 18.1. It's the Golden Mile Secondary Plan that the Chair of the Scarborough Community Council spoke so eloquently about. Counsel McAlvey.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Toronto East York Community Council. Counsel Wong-Tan.
Yes, thank you very much, Speaker. I need to hold TE 19.5, 373 Front Street East and 90 Mill Street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now go to new business and business--
Sorry, Speaker. I'm sorry. I've just lost the CMP on my computer here. But I wanted to defer TE 19.58. And I'm sorry to jump in just after someone told us not to do that. That was you, Brett. But I've lost the screen here, so--
So is that the TE 19.58, which is MetroLink's tree removal?
Ensuring Transparent-- Yes. To defer that to the next council meeting, if that's okay. I sent the motion to the clerk, but I don't know if I have it yet.
Okay, Counsel Fletcher is recommending to defer TE 19.58. On favor. Show of hands. Thank you. Okay, we'll now go to new business and business previously requested. Counsel Cressy.
Yes, Speaker. I'm holding, and I'm hoping that we can just do this as a vote and be done with it. Item CC 25.1, Deciding the Method to Fill the Vacancy in the Office of Counselor Ward 22. If we can do this quickly, I'm prepared to move one of the options, and we vote, and there we go.
I had some very fulsome-- on a point of order, Madam Speaker, I had a very fulsome motion just to help the member. And if he has a copy of it, then he could move it too. I don't care.
Yeah.
It was same-- I think we're going to move the same option, but I just have--
Sir--
--very complete motion in my hand here.
What does--
Sir, I believe it's-- I'm happy to release it to you to move that if you'd like, sir.
Okay, we'll get the-- okay, we can put the motion on the screen. The mayor will move the motion. Does anybody else have any questions on this item? No? Okay, so if we can put the motion on the screen. Okay, it's on the screen.
Shall I just speak briefly to it, Speaker? Or is that not in order? I don't know.
Please just explain it--
Well, essentially, Speaker, it says that we select-- we would, as a council, select option B, which is to hold a by-election to fill the vacancy. It then has a draft bill attached, and then it deals in items one and two of the motion with taking modest adjustments to the contribution rebates, and secondly, to make a modest increase to the city clerk's budget to account for the cost of running the by-election. But I think, in the circumstances, given where we are in the term of office and so forth and so on, that the by-election is the proper way to handle the filling up. So that's the motion.
Okay, is everybody okay with the motion on the screen? On favor, show of hands.
Recorded vote, please, Speaker. Record a vote.
I'm sorry. Did somebody say they wanted to hold it?
Recorded vote, please.
Recorded vote. Okay, thank you.
Madam Speaker, while they're getting ready to open the vote, could I just highlight that when the motions first go up, the entire line does not appear on the screen. It does now that they vote.
Members, the voting panel is now open. Would you please indicate your vote? Counsel Pasternak, are you able to vote online? If you're having trouble, Counsel Pasternak, refreshing your screen might help. Thank you.
I'm fine. I know what I'm doing most of the time. I'll vote for it.
Open the vote.
The motion carries unanimously. 24 in favor.
Okay. Are there any further holds on new business? Okay.
Speaker, is now an appropriate time to introduce a motion to move the Audit Committee agenda to this council meeting.
And Madam Speaker, it's Counsel Wong-Tan. My name is actually on the list for holds of new business.
Okay, I thought that we did go to the CC items. I thought we already did. I asked if there are any more. Counsel Wong-Tan.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. CC 25.3, and bear with me, Counsel, that's a very long title. 161 to 168 Parliament Street, 351, 363, 371, and 373 Queen Street East, and 80, 90, 92, and 94 Power Street. Official plan is zoning by law amendment. Madam Speaker, I don't need to hold this item. I would ask that we have a recorded vote, please. And this is a recommendation of a settlement from the city solicitors. I'll be voting in the--
The item carries. The vote is 22 to 2.
Counsel Perks.
Yes, Speaker, I'm sorry. I attempted to do this earlier, but my meeting portal froze, so I had no access.
So what would you like to hold?
To this. I would like to release two items that I am holding on planning and housing.
So Counsel Perks, you would like to release your two items on planning and growth, 17.4 and 17.5. Is that what you want to do?
Yes. Yes, Speaker. Thank you so much. My apologies.
So on planning and housing, 17.4, Counsel Perks is releasing. On favor, show of hands.
Vote, please.
Who said hold?
Recorded vote, Madam Speaker. Just recorded vote.
Counsel Cressy and Counsel Perutsa, your votes, please. Item PH 17.4 carries unanimously. 23 members in favor.
Okay, thank you. And PH 17.5, Counsel Perks is releasing. Pilot project to protect rooming houses for long-term care.
And I apologize, but I would also need a recorded vote on this one.
Counsel Cressy and Counsel Thompson, please. And Counsel Pasternak, please. Thank you. Madam Speaker, item PH 17.5 carries unanimously. 24 in favor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if we can-- Counsel Matlow.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to hold CC 25.4, 141 Davidson.
Thank you. Counsel Pasternak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wonder whether we can go back to Infrastructure and Environment Committee to hold IE 16.1 for a technical amendment?
Okay.
And if staff have the motion ready, it came in-- clerks have the motion ready, it came in from staff, we can release it right now, unless counselors want to review the motion.
Yes, that's right, yeah. So the motion is on the screen for IE 16.1.
It's just-- yeah, so it's just tinkering with the wording a bit to make sure the regulatory request is appropriate to allow cargo bikes and other throttle-operated electric motors to operate on our streets. So we just had to tinker with the wording to make sure the request was clear of the province.
I think we have a record--
Recorded's fine. Hand vote's fine.
Yes. So Counsel Grimes, can you turn off your video? You have an interest in this item?
Okay.
Okay, and we'll take a recorded vote.
Counsel Grimes, please. And Counsel Wong-Tan, please. Thank you. The amendment carries, Madam Speaker. Members, who would just stand by? We're going to put a motion up. Counsel Bradford, are you present in the meeting? Ah, thank you.
Just adjacent, but I am here.
Okay. Members, it would be helpful for us, when the vote is open, if you just stay on screen so that we can match the results that we see on our screen with what we see on the video meeting. Thank you. Madam Speaker, the item as amended carries unanimously. 23 in favor.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Carroll.
Oh, yes, I put my name last here, Madam Speaker, because I just wanted to ask if you were moving from this to any urgent item issues.
No, not yet. Okay.
Oh, okay.
Counsel Holliday, now it's-- at this time, you can move your motion to bring forward the Audit Committee.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And am I okay to speak very briefly to it? I think it would be helpful to members.
Yes.
With-- thank you. If I may ask the clerks to present that motion. It is lengthy because there are 12 items. But I-- hopefully, the members will accept that as rare. I'm moving the Audit Committee agenda, which was considered last Friday, forward to this council meeting, as I believe it would be efficient to do so. Members, if I may point out very quickly four items to you that if you wanted to prioritize for your consideration and preparation for any debate on it. Items 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4 all have presentations from the Auditor General. 6.1 and 6.4 are in consideration of audits around employee benefits. So you may be able to look at those together. Audit 6.3 is strengthening accountability and outcomes for affordable housing. I will take a moment to thank the auditor for that, because I think it's very meaningful and relevant, some of the findings that she has found. And audit item 6.2 is in consideration of the winter road maintenance program, and it has very material amounts of money involved, and it has well over 20 recommendations coming forward from the Audit Committee. And that was something that we spent quite a bit of time on. And I will be asking to hold that item in particular. Other than that, if I may be of assistance, or the Auditor General, I would encourage you to reach out to any of us to get you information, to prepare you for this, as I do appreciate there's been a very short time since it was considered at the Audit Committee and this council meeting. And remember that we will be having another audit meeting in November, so there will be another tranche of items coming very shortly. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counsel Holliday. On favor. Carried. Thank you. I will now consider request to make items urgent and time-specific. The clerk will open the speaker's list and CMP, and please place your name on the list. Counsel Cressy.
Thank you, Speaker. I'd move that we make item HL 22.1, that is the Board of Health item on the COVID response, time-specific to tomorrow, Wednesday morning, as the first item, to accommodate our Toronto Public Health team and the Medical Officer of Health.
Okay, on the motion by Counsel Cressy, on favor, show of hands. Carried. Counsel Carroll.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, member motion 2510, which is preserving rank valid elections, it is on the agenda right now with the ability to be referred to executive, but the province has just announced that they want all feedback back on this clause of Bill, is it 218 or 218? They want all feedback back by November 4. And so I would ask that that be declared urgent and without the ability to refer off to a committee. Council needs to vote on it today in order for it to be considered as feedback, should council support the motion.
A point of order, a point of order, Madam Speaker. Feedback can go either way. Feedback can be approving the motion.
That's what I just said. That's why I said should council support this motion. They need to decide today.
Madam Chair, I have a point of order.
Well, it's a member's motion that requires a two-thirds majority.
That's correct. We would need the two-thirds vote. Deputy Mayorman and Wong, point of order.
Can you explain to me why we're discussing this right now when the item hasn't been introduced?
She wants, Counselor Carroll wants to bring the item forward as under time-specific.
But it hasn't been introduced yet. It's not.
No, it hasn't been introduced. So what we would have to do, if council want, we can introduce it, go through the process, two-thirds vote. If it gets introduced, then Counselor Carroll can move time-specific on the item.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, I'm going to need to ask a procedural point of order here.
Yes, because we're under time, we're under time-specific right now.
Okay, so Madam Speaker, I'm going to need to ask a point of order.
Counselor Carroll, hold on, hold on, hold on. It's introduced. Yeah. Okay, Counselor Carroll.
So, Madam Speaker, I think I'm going to need to understand, this motion, notice was given, it was in before the deadline, so there would not, in fact, there wouldn't be a vote to introduce it to the agenda. It's on the agenda. The only thing that needs to be voted on is to waive referral. And I am asking whether or not we could vote now in the order paper not to make it an item eligible for referral. We would be voting to consider it on this agenda. Notice has already been given that it is on the agenda.
It just hasn't been introduced on the agenda, Shelley. We haven't gotten to it yet.
Yeah, a point of order, it is not on the agenda, and therefore cannot.
Okay, can I get a ruling on my point of order first?
Yes, yes, just one sec. One at a time, please, one at a time.
Madam Speaker, the member motion, of course, is published on the agenda. By convention, we consider them at 2 o'clock on the second day, and that's, all things being equal, what we would be doing here today. It is in order, and there is precedent for it. When an item that appears on the main agenda, that is a member motion, is deemed urgent by council, that the consideration of the item can be separated from the other member motions and considered earlier, i.e. on the first day. If council were to decide that and fix a time for that, it could do that. So we could decide to do that, you know, before, after the mayor's key items, for example. Or it could even consider, it could by a vote, agree to do that now. The first thing that would happen would be the motion, the two-thirds vote to waive referral. That cannot be waived. That is a requirement of the procedural bylaw. So in short, the answer is council can move consideration of this up earlier, and we would treat it just like we would if it was 2 o'clock tomorrow. We would, we would start with a motion to waive referral.
So, Madam Speaker, so Madam Speaker, what I'm hearing is that I can't change that we would have to vote on the referral. So 2 o'clock tomorrow afternoon, I would stick with that timing, because that still meets the deadline of the province.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's it for the time-specific items. Members, before we adopt the order paper, we will conduct recorded votes on those items where members have declared an interest. Okay, we'll start with GL 16.11. The mayor has shown an interest on that, so if I can ask the mayor to turn off his video, and we'll take a recorded vote.
I sent you the updated version, so I think whenever you're ready, you can just... Okay.
Okay, it's on the screen. Recorded vote.
Members, the voting panel is open. Counselor Ainsley, your vote, please. And Counselor Fletcher, can you refresh your screen?
I've now just been kicked off the CMP, so.
In the meantime, could I have your vote verbally, please? How do you vote?
Yeah, it's yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm getting back on now. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, the item carries unanimously, 23 in favor.
Okay, the next item is TE 19.4, and Counselor Bradford has an interest, and as well as the mayor, so if you can keep your video off, and we'll have a recorded vote.
The voting panel is open. This is TE 19.4. Counselor Ainsley, can you see the vote buttons on the screen? Counselor Ainsley, can you see the vote buttons? You may need to refresh your screen, your browser screen. If not, yeah. Counselor Ainsley, how do you vote, sir?
I'm voting yes. Voting yes.
Madam Speaker, the item carries unanimously, 22 in favor.
Thank you. Our next one is TE 19.13, and Counselor Bradford and the mayor has an interest in these two items as well. So if you can turn off your video, and we'll have a recorded vote.
The voting panel is now open on TE 19.13. Item TE 19.13 carries unanimously, 22 votes in favor.
Okay, our next one is NY 18.5, which the mayor has an interest on that, so if I can ask the mayor to turn off his video, and we'll have a recorded vote.
The voting panel is now open. Counselor Matlow, please. Madam Speaker, the item carries unanimously, 23 votes in favor.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of adopting the balance of the order paper and all items not held, please raise your hands.
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Recorded, please. Recorded?
Madam Speaker, point of order, Counselor Grimes.
A point of order, Counselor Grimes.
The 16.1, we both voted on that, correct? I'm already good on that one, right?
Pardon?
IE 16.1.
Yeah, we already voted on that one.
Okay, we're good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, record, I was, there's a request for recorded vote for adopting the balance of the order paper, so recorded vote.
The vote panel on the adoption of the order paper is now open. Madam Speaker, the vote to adopt the order paper carries unanimously, 24 in favor.
Thank you. Members, before we begin our first item, I want to remind you that although members are participating remotely, you must still submit your motions and write into the clerk. The clerk's staff are available.
Space satellite launch by the Islamic Republic of Iran, and then a meeting on 22 June to discuss the findings and recommendations contained in the ninth report of the Secretary General on Resolution 2231 prior to its public release. Second, the two regular quarterly reports issued by the International Atomic Energy Agency during the last six months, in March and June, were also circulated to the 2231 representatives for their information. Third, I would like to thank member states who sent official communications either addressed to the President of the Security Council, the Secretary General, and/or to myself, which were circulated within the 2231 format during this six-month period. There was a total.